Alderman Kurkowski?
Here.
Bukavich?
Here.
Frahelin?
Here.
Toman?
Here.
Gale?
Here.
Gusekowsky?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, visible, liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the approval of minutes of February 15th, 2016.
Kurkowski will make a motion to approve the minutes of February 15th, 2016. Gusekowsky will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich?
Aye.
Frahelin?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Gusekowsky?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye. Item four is a council proclamation, proclamation sixteen dash oh two, it's a recognition to Judith A. Price for her service as community public health officer. City clerk will read that into the record.
Council proclamation sixteen dash zero two, recognition of Judith A. Price for her service, whereas Judith A. Price will retire from her position as community public health officer on March first, 2016, after nine months, nine years, six months, and three days of dedicated full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. And whereas Judy has been a valuable department head during her years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Health Department, always striving to enhance and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Judy has been a model for all, for all under her direction, being well-known for her work ethic, her dedication to the Health Department, and her leadership. And whereas during her tenures as a community public health officer, Judy was responsible for the development of policies, procedures, and programs, enabling the Health Department to rise to a Level Two Health Department on January 21st, 2010, and then to a Level Three Health Department on October 13th, 2014. And whereas Judy has been an outstanding representative for the city of Oak Creek by actively participating in the Board of Health, the Milwaukee Waukesha Preparedness Consortium, the Southeast Wisconsin Association of Local Health Departments and Boards, as well as others. And whereas over her nine years, six months, and three days of service, Judy has witnessed and participated in the growth of the city of Oak Creek, including the Health Department's successful move to the new Oak Creek Civic Center. And whereas Judy has been responsible for the recognition of the Health Department's preparedness efforts through Project Public Health Ready by the National Association of County and City Health Officials. And whereas Judy will be truly missed by all with whom she has been in contact with over the last nine years, six months, and three days. And the city of Oak Creek has benefited tremendously from Judy's tireless dedication and many contributions, having devoted countless hours to the city and her department each year. Now therefore be it reclaimed by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Judy for her many years of dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek and the Health Department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Judith A. Price on her retirement.
Thank you, Catherine. And for those of us who've worked with Judy know the kind of work she did and the tremendous ethic she had for her job. And she will be hard to replace. And I think our Health Department, in our new environment, is, has been served tremendously by all the work that she did before we moved and certainly since we've gotten into this building. So, I'll miss Judy and I wish her health and a great retirement. So, need a motion from the council.
Mayor, just I want to concur with your comments there. Judy was a tremendous public servant and a great employee. So, she will be missed. We were happy to have her for the years she was here. With that, Gale will make the recommendation to approve Council Proclamation sixteen dash zero two, recognition of Judith A. Price for her services as a community public health officer.
Kurkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Frahelin?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Gusekowsky?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Under public hearings, item five is a rezon request by Kelvin Schrader, South Shore Group, to rezone the property located at 7518 South Howell Avenue from RD1, two-family residential to B4 highway business within the First District. Doug? Actually, city clerk.
Notice of public hearing before the common council, public hearing number one, is to consider a request by Kelvin Schrader, South Shore Group, to rezone the property located at 7518 South Howell Avenue from RD1, two-family residential to B4 highway business. Applicant is Kelvin Schrader, South Shore Group, property owner Charles and Margaret Knutson. There follows the legal description. Date of the notice is February 4th, 2016.
All right, let's try that again. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek. And this is the clerk running the records, a public hearing on a request to rezone the property at 7518 South Howell Avenue from RD1, this two-family residential to B4, which is highway business. Council members will recall that the planned use category and map and the comprehensive plan were recently amended to plan business for this property in anticipation of purchase by the applicant for a multi-tenant retail or restaurant building. As was mentioned at the planning commission and in previous meetings regarding this, the existing zone in this area is really diverse. And you can kind of see it on the overhead. You've got the property itself, which is owned RD1 for duplexes. You've got manufacturing, actually, B4 M1 PUD to the north as the Commerce Park. You've got the Seek Temple with institutional zoning to the east. You've got residential zoning to the south along Manitoba. And P1 zoning, Park zoning to the south of that for Green Lawn Park. East, I'm sorry, west of Howell Avenue, there's a mix of retail and manufacturing zoning in the south, in the North Branch Industrial Park. So staff feels, and again in accordance with the comprehensive plan, that the requested change for B4 is consistent and therefore has recommended its approval. However, just wanted to note, even at this early stage, remember we're not approving site plans at this point, but that there are several concerns that we have with the conceptual site plan. We'll work with the applicant to get those addressed prior to their coming in for a formal site plan submittal. As far as the fiscal impact of the proposed rezoning, the zoning change would allow for the construction of a new multi-tenant commercial facility on the property, with the respective impact fees currently estimated at about $8,505 for the roughly $13,500 square foot building. This is a public hearing. I would ask that if there's any questions or concerns regarding the proposal to rezone the property at 7518 South Howell Avenue, if you please fill out a comment form, submit that to the city clerk or to the mayor. He will call your name, at which point you may continue the podium. Once called upon, please give your name, address, and proceed to address your concern to the common council. The public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comment on this item. First call. Second call. And third call. Caesar, just a note, my mic is cutting in and out. Seems to be working some. Third and final call. Seeing no one coming forward, we're going to move to the actual discussion of the ordinance. It's ordinance number 2792. It approves the rezoning of the property at 7518 South Howell Avenue from RD1, two-family residential to B4 highway business in the First District. Before the meeting, representatives of the temple handed me, and I've had the city clerk make copies, they've had, they made a few comments on this document relating to the fact that they were noticed on the earlier plan commission meetings. And they were noticed on this meeting. I just had the city clerk check that. Their comments were related to the rezoning request. Just briefly summarize them. If you don't know, this property is immediately west, immediately in front of the Seek Temple of Wisconsin on Howell Avenue. Their comments are, we as the Seek Temple of Wisconsin, who have been congregating here since 2007, object to the rezoning of this property. As a community, we chose to move our congregation to this location for the peace and serenity of the area. Because of the location of our temple, many Sikh families have chosen to live and work within Oak Creek. Additionally, we currently own all surrounding property to 7518 South Howell Avenue. So any rezoning would impact our temple and our congregation greatly. And though the greater Oak Creek area is developing, and we promote that development, we do not want our congregation to be negatively impacted by commercial zoning. I've also had a conversation with representatives from Kelvin Schrader. And you're builder? Okay. What's your name? Why don't you come up to the mic? Just name and address for the record.
My name is Eric Hyam, 17855 Bermuda Boulevard in Brookfield, Wisconsin. I represent Blind Squirrel Development on behalf of Kelvin Schrader Jewelers.
And the reason we had the conversation is, the temple is concerned about, and although this is a rezoning request and not a specific use, they are concerned that the rezoning request will lead to a building that has uses that frankly, they're not too excited about. So we had a brief conversation. The members talked about the, some of the uses they didn't like were tobacco and alcohol, liquor stores. You've expressed to me, and actually I'll let you speak for yourself, on what you thought those uses for that building were going to be. And again, I understand this is a rezoning request, but I think when we have neighbors that are adjoining a property, I think this is, should be part of the discussion.
Thank you. Yes, we spoke with the representatives from the temple, and it is our intention to be good neighbors and stewards of the community. Kelvin Schrader's been in business for, I believe, 79 years. They've been at their Oak Creek location since like 1983, I believe. We are just in the preliminary planning stages. The zoning is contingent on, or the purchase is contingent on the zoning. Once they acquire the zoning, they will purchase the property and we will proceed. Currently, we're down to about a little over 10,000 square feet on the building. We anticipate there'll be a total of four tenants in that building. While it's not determined yet, and we're not necessarily stating, and I don't represent that it's going to be as such, I have to be careful for marketing reasons, but it's going to, let me just say, it'll be sort of a wedding-centric type of location. They're looking to have the jewelry store. We've been in talks with a floral company that's looking to relocate to Oak Creek, and also a bridal shop that's looking to relocate to Oak Creek. That type of businesses, your regular nine-to-five type businesses, there may be some interest of a coffee shop or something, you know, on the property, but we don't know. But we are willing to work with the Sikh community and assure them that this will be a quality development, and we'll work with them as good neighbors, as we do in all of our ventures.
I appreciate you coming up and saying that.
No problem.
At this point, I'll open it up to the council for their comments. Questions? Alderman Bukavich?
I guess I'll just make a comment. This zoning and building approval, it basically kind of came through planning twice, and we really heard no objections on it. Surprised it kind of came at this late hour that there were some questions going forward. I guess it was my impression at planning, though, that this multi-tenant building was going to fall along the lines of the jewelry shop and related businesses to possibly the bridal and wedding business. So, I don't know if we can put an adder in there to stop liquor stores or tobacco-use stores, but I totally understand the temple's point of view on that. But again, that was the intention that I was understood at planning, so I'd like you to honor that as all possible.
And I echo what Dan just said, Alderman Bukavich. Those were the comments that were made. And frankly, I'm not, I'm not sure that we even have a florist in the city right now, so probably a good business opportunity. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Gale?
Sorry, thanks, mayor. Just Doug, I don't, you could probably shed some light on that. What, what of any power we have, once a lot is zoned for business, what discretion you have over it, sort of filtering what actually shows up there?
Certainly. And if it's a permitted use in that zoning district, and the B4 zoning district encompasses all the permitted uses in the B1 local and the B2 neighborhood, as well as the B4 highway business district, there really is no discretion. And it is, if it is a permitted use. If it's a conditional use, then there certainly is some discretion, but if it's permitted, it's permitted. And this would be the right of any property owner to develop the property in accordance with the zoning code.
Doug, you know, similar to the property that exists here, we actually created a special zoning district to have some discretion on that. Is, is there an option for a landowner to do that?
I'd be very careful and cautious about doing that, doing that type of contract zoning, to be quite honest with you. I mean, if there's a overwhelming public interest to create a zoning category, modify a zoning category that has broader applications throughout the city, throughout the community, I think that's certainly we can, something we can look at, but I would hesitate to be so focused on one property.
Okay, understandable. So, it's at that point, you're, once it's zoned for business, you are relying upon the landlord or the owner of the property to screen for appropriate tenants?
And certain, as far as the uses are concerned, the plan commission certainly does and always will have the control over the development of the site building, landscaping, lighting plans.
Thank you, Ken. Any other questions? Alderman Toman?
Did the, did you get any comment from the current owners of the property at the planning?
Not that I haven't, Dan, are there any comments?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mike?
Did you get any comments from the current owners of the, the house is still on that property?
No, the homeowners really didn't come forward. Kelvin Schrader's representatives came forward.
I'm talking about the residential?
No.
You didn't have anything from them?
No.
That's interesting. I was just wondering what their feeling was. It is, it was planned long-term for business eventually.
Right. And they are the ones selling the property, obviously, so it's...
I'm just wondering if we don't move forward with that, are we restricting the sale of that property by the, by the current owners? Are they going to have trouble?
Well, I guess I would submit to you at this point that, given the changes that were recently made to the comprehensive plan, that this zoning is consistent with that comprehensive plan, and therefore, unless there are other compelling factors that would prohibit the city from granting this rezoning, it should be inclined to do so based on its findings in the comprehensive plan.
Understand what I'm saying.
I do.
And I think you're right. That kind of a slowdown or a hold could affect the sale of the property, and that does impact the current owner of the property. I'm going to take the applicant's, rep from the applicant's word on this, and that you'll work with the surrounding neighbors, most notably the Seek Temple of Wisconsin. I have no doubt that you're going, you're going to put a quality, they will put a quality business in, businesses in that site, so. It's up to the council on what you want to do. Alderman Bukavich?
Just one last thing. I think Doug made an important point, regardless of what business comes through there, they're going to come through planning either way with conditions and restrictions. So we will get a last kick at the cat, so to speak, at it. I think Doug's point was very pertinent to reassure what could go there.
Yes.
I would just like to add, this, this is an owner-occupied property, and not a property where the owners presided some other community and don't care, they're just here to lease it and, and collect the money. The, the Schraders are moving because they feel they're abused in their current position, you know, they just aren't getting the response of respect, and they want to give that response and respect to their tenants and their neighbors as well. And the seller's representative has been involved with this. They're here, they have no objections. We've given up, we forfeited our earnest money to them because of the delays in this process, to show them good faith that we are, we're going to go through with it. It's just the technical part of getting the zoning. So any assurances I can give you is, as good as I can, that's...
And again, we understand that, and they've been great city partners. Kelvin Schroeder has a long history here. But again, circumstances change in three years down the line, could be a whole different ballgame. So, we're just trying to do the best we can.
Right. And it makes, as a, as a member of the political community, and I have the same role, I'm also, for full disclosure, I'm a Waukesha County Supervisor. I understand exactly what you're talking about, the risk we run into and which avenues we're going to go down. And I think you're doing it cautiously, but I, you know, if, as we go through the zone, or through the actual planning, you know, I think we're all aware of it, and we'll abide by our neighbors.
Right, thank you.
Just a heads up, I think Caesar, I realize the mics are now in a voice oper, or voice activated, makes a lot of sense, thanks.
Is that what's going on?
Yeah. You don't have to, you don't have to...
How do we notify you?
Even I, in my advanced age, can recognize that technology is sometimes helpful.
I just, I just want, I'm not going to repeat what's already been said, I agree with what's been said, but I'll just place my trust in the, in the owners, that they're going to work with the members of the Seek Temple.
All right.
I have one last thing. I think this is a best-case scenario for a potential new neighbor for the, for the Seek Temple. You've got Kelvin Schroeder, they're 79 years, they've been in business, they've been a good business partner in the city of Oak Creek already. So, I think this is really just a win-win situation all the way around. So I think this is a best-case scenario, because you don't know potentially who your neighbor could be, and that might not be the best scenario either.
We should just do a show of hands of how many men in the audience have actually bought things from Kelvin Schrader. Bet it's pretty high. All right, need a motion on number six.
Kurkowski will make a motion that the council adopt ordinance number 2792, approving the rezoning of the property at 7518 South Howell Avenue from RD1, two-family residential to B4 highway business.
Bukavich, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Gusekowsky?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Mark, can you pull your mic down? Thanks. I encourage you and your, your team to stay in touch, so that both parties are happy. Thanks for being here tonight. All right, moving to new business, item seven is a consideration of a motion to approve license agreements with SESAC, Society of European Stage Authors and Composers, BMI Broadcast Music Inc., and ASCAP for the rebroadcast of music by licensed performers.
Catherine, you want to take this, or you want me to? So what this is, is annually, we pay a license fee, basically for our rebroadcast of music. It's based on population. We actually do have, actually not elevator music on the library phones, it's cooler than that. They actually have some pretty nice waiting music. We use that as part of our recreation programs, and the music industry gets paid by some of these license agreements. So this is an annual cost that we have, that's relatively small. The two fees, just, just a little over $1,000 combined.
Okay. Questions? Motion.
Gale, move to approve the license agreements with SESAC, BMI, and ASCAP for the rebroadcast of music licensed by performers.
Gusekowsky will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Gusekowsky?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Frahelin?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Item eight is a motion to approve the 2015 vendor summary report on the amount of $128,959.98, and a 2016 vendor summary report on the amount of $614,383.85, for combined total of $743,343.83. Finance Director here is, is here to answer any of your questions.
Bridgette, I beg your indulgence, I forgot to ask you these two questions, but on item number three and 13, can you tell us how far along we are and how close we are to being done paying for those services on this project? And others?
So, three is our Chamberlain Group, and we are very close to holding just the retainages on those property, or the project as a whole. So Chamberlain Group, we're very close to the end, as well as the design.
Just want to add to that, today, I was supposed to be at a meeting, but Chamberlain met with Dick Culker, Maintenance Supervisor, as well as Tom and his staff. We closed out the fire station project, basically, today. We're going to release all payments for that. There's a, I think a $25,000 retention from the contractor, and we basically finalized that project out today. We're going to make sure we document that in the file. So, that's Chamberlain there. We have, I think, just a small amount left in the City Hall, as Bridgette said, and I believe we are done, except for Main Street with RA Smith. RA Smith is the inspector that's on site, so Grave Engineering did the design, and then we've got two components of inspection. The city provides inspection for streets and streetlights, and then the utility actually has an inspector that comes out there when the contractors, and the only thing we've got left, basically, is Main Street, which won't be done until Wired is finished with their buildings, because they're right next to the street, so very, very small portion of that one left.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, we're also utilizing RA Smith for the 20th Street project, so that is still very current and active right now, so you'll see that.
You always want to, you know, between law and inspections, we have ongoing significant costs, so it's always interesting to see where we are in that process.
Any other questions? Motion.
Gale, move to approve the 2015 vendor summary report in the amount of $128,959.98, and the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $614,383.85, for a combined total of $743,343.83.
Gusekowsky will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gusekowsky?
Aye.
Gusekowsky?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Frahelin?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Under engineering, item nine is a motion to authorize the 20th Street Phase 1A improvements and to improve an amendment to the design contract with RA Smith National in the amount of $24,685 for the design to Second District. City Engineer Mike Simmons?
Thank you, mayor. 20th Street north of Drexel Avenue is currently under construction. That was designed and put up for bid in the summer and early fall of 2015. Currently, all the utilities are in place, and the majority of the grading for the Phase 1 construction. And the Phase 1 construction is the segment of the road that completes the intersection 20th and Drexel, extends approximately 1,000 feet to the, to the north. Its primary purpose is to serve the school that's under construction now. With recent considerations, and you see it on the screen, it's got a lot of lines, but basically what you see grayed in is the current design and what's, what's under contract to be constructed now. What you see in red is an expanded intersection, which is the, the stem of what the request is here tonight. So, on more recent consideration of discussion on development, potential on the adjacent properties surrounding the school site, seems to be some urgency on getting that road constructed to ultimate capacity sooner rather than later. And really, as a first step only, is this Phase 1 improvements, which would accommodate a second turn lane out of the, out of 20th Street onto Drexel Avenue, with the primary movement being left turns out to access the interstate.
So, some forward thinking on the design side.
Yeah, so now the natural question is, why didn't we design this last summer? And the answer to that question is that the design of the roadway and the permitting process, that's the wetlands that we had to cross, the permitting process was very restrictive. Basically, give us the least impactful road impacting the wetlands, that is, that we can permit, and we cannot allow you to build a road on speculation, it's serving the school. And there was, there was less clarity to development possibilities at that time, and the urgency of staying ahead of the school construction. So, a lot of factors that we had to push through. Some of the factors now have changed enough that we took another look at this, and we think that it's a good idea to at least widen that intersection. And there's, there's a number of reasons why we can do that. That does not affect the wetlands. It stays completely south of the wetlands. So what you see on, on your screen is the red lane, which will allow for a second lane of traffic in getting beyond that main access to the school. So, a couple of things. We wouldn't construct what is currently under contract and then tear it up, potentially within a year and a half to two years. We would get that intersection to its expanded capacity and not impact school traffic, as it's trying to get in and out of there, you know, within the first couple of years of it in operation. We approached RA Smith, who did the original design, and asked them for a proposal. Now, they gave us a proposal, and that's what you see before you, $24,000 and change. We think that that's reasonable for them to do this design, and basically as a, an amendment to their original contract, and even as a change order to the existing contract with DF Tommasini. They have indicated their willingness to work and honor their bid prices, the contract prices. So, we think we can get this accomplished very efficiently, because they have all, they know the design, they have all the CAD line work, the base mapping, so, and they are willing to get started on this right away. Basically, their proposal says, we can have this design for you in four weeks. We were to go out for proposals, that would be six weeks before we even have a designer online, so.
All right, well, thanks for that detail, Mike, I appreciate that. Questions? All right. Well, thanks for that detail, Mike. I appreciate that. Questions? Alderman, Haley?
Just one question. I was under the impression that NML was going to run some of the costs for the initial portion of that street. Are they going to cost share any of this as well or are we putting the whole thing?
NML did cost share significantly in the first phase. I remember if I remember correctly was five hundred thousand. And then we also had a hundred and fifty thousand from the school district. So they did share in the first phase. There is no additional share from them in this expansion.
Other questions?
This, um, this is going to dead end still? Is that going to, or is it the road going to actually go west to twenty seven?
The, the existing road is Mike suggested goes a little bit more than a thousand feet north. I think it's a thousand twenty five. So it basically goes to the north end of the school property right now and it would continue to end at that point. We may see some expansion of that roadway quickly north and that's why we've got this expansion to you today. Essentially, we don't want to be digging up a street based on some of those development pressures that we've seen that are all along. How in eight months from now when the school's in session. So we think it's prudent to do this. This will put that roadway intersection at what the ultimate capacity will be, which is a good thing to do at this point. And if we see further activity out there, we're going to have other, other expansions in this shortly.
Thank you.
Other questions? Motion?
Mayor, I just want to say, I think, just out of practicing, it's, it's good policy to hear and get in front of a major project. Make sure you scale it appropriately for future, future needs and, and potential development. So I think it's good practice and from my recall, over, over time, twenty four thousand six eighty five for design work seems very reasonable for kind of the scope of what we're asking for here. So I think it's a good move all around. So.
Want to make the motion?
Let the, hold on for a second.
Hey, which will make a motion to authorize twentieth street phase one A improvements and to improve an amended, an amendment to the design contract with R.A. Smith National in the amount of twenty four thousand six hundred eighty five dollars for the design.
Is it called second?
I think I heard Kirkowski's second. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Item ten is a motion to award the 2016 sidewalk improvements contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Raza of Racine LLC at an estimated cost of sixty, thank you, Mr. Deggner, estimated cost of sixty one thousand eight hundred eighty two dollars and sixty five cents, project number one three zero two three in various districts.
Okay, we have put together a, a project to complete the, the remainder of the trip hazard eliminations throughout the city. This is the, over the course of the last three years, we've, we've protected two other projects, taking care of the north part of the city and then getting down to Oakwood Road. So this is basically everything south of Oakwood Road that still needed attention. We completed the inspections, put together the, the bid package and, and these are the bids before you. Fairly, fairly competitive. I would say the top three were competitive, the other three a little bit higher. But we were happy to see six bids. You know, I, I think in the, in the past two years, we've gotten four on the previous and then just two last year.
Mr. Deggner, did you want to speak on this item?
Arden Deggner, eighty five forty, South Pennsylvania. My first question is, apparently this only pertains to twentieth street. It just says south of Oakwood Road, doesn't say which, which.
That's not correct.
What?
It's not correct. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Deggner, it's everything south of Oakwood Road from, from our west boundary all the way to the lakefront. Any streets that have public sidewalks were, those were inspected and noted.
Well, it, it bothers me that we're not going to do any more sidewalk work till nineteen, twenty eighteen because we have that application in for safe roads to the schools and we know that Toots Road and these others, Ross and Avno, they, they refuse to recognize that that's a hazard. To me, this is preposterous to spend money on, on music and yet leave these trip hazards unaddressed.
I think actually we're doing the opposite.
Yes, this is just the repair of the, the drip hazards. This, this is not related to expanding the sidewalk network at all.
Well, thank you for your comments.
I just want to clarify that, that that does not prevent us from doing extensions to the sidewalk program. As Mr. Deggner pointed out, we do have a grant in for safe routes to school. And if we get that, we have the ability to fill in some sidewalk routes.
As we've done consistently over the last five years. All right, motion?
Kirkowski will make a motion to award the 2016 sidewalk improvements contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Raza of Racine LLC at an estimated cost of sixty one thousand eight hundred eighty two dollars sixty five cents, project number one three zero two three.
Hey, which will second?
Roll call.
Alderman, Kavich.
Aye.
For Helen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item eleven is a motion to award, as consideration of a motion to award the 2016 tree clearing contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Homer Tree Service, at an estimated cost of thirty two thousand five hundred dollars, project number one two zero two six, one three zero two two, and one five zero one five. These projects are in the first, third, and fourth districts.
The, the reason for this project was to keep three planned projects on schedule while also respecting the endangered species called the northern long-eared bat, which requires that projects that have federal jurisdiction, that's either funding or say Army Corps of Engineers involvement jurisdiction, that they do not have tree clearing happening between April first and September thirtieth. So that's, it's, it's a tough requirement because it's right in the, in the, in the meat of the construction season. So basically our three projects that fell under, under that were the, the Fifth Avenue Extension Project, the Nicholson Road Bridge Project, and then the Aben Shain Park Project, which is the next item on the, on the agenda here tonight. So, so basically we put together a clearing project to get this work out and, and get the clearing done before April first.
Questions?
Like, is that a, is that a policy a lot of developers or builders are aware? It's kind of very restrictive.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's relatively new and, you know, with our research, we, we determined that basically even the Wisconsin DNR does not recognize the long, northern long-eared bat in this area, but the fed, feds do. And so that's why it's the distinction there.
What is the short-eared bat feel about this?
I think the Butler garter snake feels neglected now.
Save the bats. Any other questions? Motion?
Kirkowski will make a motion to award the 2016 tree clearing contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Homer Tree Service, at an estimated cost of thirty two thousand five hundred dollars, projects numbers one two zero two six, one three zero two two, and one five zero one five.
Roll call.
Alderman, for Helen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Kale.
Aye.
Aye.
Item twelve is a motion to award the Aben Shain Park Phase Three contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, always contractors, at an estimated cost of three hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty five dollars, project number one five zero one five in the first district.
Uh, this is the third phase of the Aben Shain Park Development and basically it encompasses additional paved trails, some wooden mulch trails, and a, a third and final pedestrian bridge crossing the creek, connecting the, the west park to the east side. But basically this project is, as you see on the screen in, in red, that's the alignment for the path. You can see the bridge crossing over kind of on the southeast part of the site and connecting up to the, put the parking lot on the west side and to the existing path on, on the east side. What's not included in this is, is the woodchip path, which the streets and parks have committed to taking care of themselves, doing the clearing and creating the mulch path. So this adds about point eight five miles to the asphalt pathways in that park. The mulch, when they're completed, will be another third of a mile of pathways. Bids came in reasonable. Basically, the lowest and the second lowest were within percentage points of each other. And so the recommendation is to work.
So once this is done, we'll almost have a full mile of running paths and woodchip paths?
Yeah, well, more than that because the existing pathways in the parks are one point one miles already. So we'd be approaching two full miles.
Yeah, I, I did the calculation ahead of time. That was going to be a fun fact. I was going to provide two point two seven miles. So one of the things I asked Pete to do is talk with Parks and Rec Committee and see if we can't put a little signage. I think what we did at the Emerald Park where there's some feedback there, where our, our department, you know, put one tenth of a mile where we can get some feedback there. So I'd, I'd like, I asked him to bring that to Parks and Rec and see if we would sign that with that signal. And actually, we talked about potentially introducing perhaps residents to this park and some of our other new parks and perhaps do a, a fitness challenge where we might have four or five different parks with walking trails. And if you get your cards signed on all of those, maybe you get a free t-shirt or something. So we can get some exposure to some of these things that we're doing, get people out, combine that with some walking and, you know, do something kind of interesting. So I've got Pete and Leslie kind of working on that. I think that could be fun. And that'll be, you know, Dan at the Parks and Rec Committee, you know, for some review and recommendation there.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, for, for everybody's information on the council, the last summer I met with, with Mike, I believe, and some of the residents along the south boundary of that, the proposed pedestrian trail. And if you see that it's, it's at one distance from the property line and then it kind of angles back towards another, another line. The original line was, was straight across and the residents had expressed some concern about being so close to their property. So the city was, and Mike was gracious and to move that, the, the proposed walkway further away from the residents. And then it kind of angles back down because the, the idea was in that particular area, there might be a, a baseball field and the, didn't want to tear up the track to, to build the field by keeping it straight across it. So that's why it kind of angles to the right a little bit. But Mike, when I was out there in the fall on another issue, I noticed that the stakes for the original location were still in the original location. They had not yet been moved. So my, you know, concern is that they, if they don't get moved, the contractor's going to come in and put the path where we didn't want it in the first place. So can you make sure that those stakes?
Yes, absolutely. When, when, when the time comes, we, you know, we do the staking for that and it'll be a whole fresh new set of points. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for meeting with the residents on that too. Alderman, Kavich?
Uh, just a comment coming out of Park and Recs on Aben Shain. A lot of attention's been gone into the parks we've recently dedicated along the lakefront and Emerald Row and the park out front here. We have created a lot of parkland, but we've really improved a lot of parkland in Aben Shain. This is a multi-year project. There's actually six phases to this. It's been going on over a number of years. It started with the Baseball Diamond and the Concession Stand and this golf is there. Cricket Field recently went in. It is our largest community park. If you haven't been out there, try to take a look at it. As Jerry said, I think an event out here would be really worthwhile. Just a point of interest, beyond the paved path, there's also going to be some natural mulch paths through the woods there. Brownish area up on the picture that the city will put in and it's just going to be mulch paths that you'll be able to walk through instead of the wetlands. So it'll be kind of natural, similar to Emerald Row. Again, this is a multi-year project. There is more planned, but it is going in phases. So again, even though the attention goes to our newer parks, this is one of our older parks and our biggest community park.
Remanded asset, properly named after the first mayor.
Jerry, if you could, could you just shed a little light in the fiscal impact that does note there's, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand in the budget and then park impact fees? Can you just give a little update on how development's actually helping pay for some of this stuff?
Correct. With every new development, we bring in impact fees for park, police, fire, as well as library. And so we do have currently about a million dollars in park impact fees. So we've used some of those here at Drexel Town Square. We've continued to use these park impact fees to create additions in Aben Shain Park over the past few years and we will with the next upcoming phases. So we budgeted the two fifty, which was all park impact fees. The additional is also going to be a park impact.
And we anticipate probably a significant slug on new fees probably in sixteen as well.
And I, I guess two other pieces of, of good news, I think, is Alderman, Kavich talked about kind of the natural areas. We actually got a grant for some wild flower plantings in this area. So we're going to be doing that in, in some of the areas at Aben Shain Park. And Doug's reminded me, we've been working with the county on the extension of the trail systems and they've actually put in a two million dollar extension to our plan under the TAP grant. We're looking to partner with them to do the local share of the dollars. They've done the application, which we have in, in our fee impacts. It's a trail system. We'll provide a map to you that links the lakefront to the Oak Link Trail and kind of a northwesternly session. And it's a really big link and will help some of the trail system we have in town. So the two communities working together, we get brownie points on that when we go to the grant agencies and we're hopeful that we're going to be successful in that. So, you know, we've got some, some good news and hopefully we'll be able to have some more we can share with you later this year or two on that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there going to, any plan to republish or, or draw new maps to let all the residents know, you know, all the different park systems we have here and what, where they can all go to and walk?
We put them in the acorn every, every issue and we're adjusting those as the perks go in. And I do think it makes some sense to get some activity that's really encouraging people to get out to those parks. And maybe we can do something that's kind of fun to encourage that and maybe do it with a healthy activity.
Thank you.
Motion?
Kirkowski will make a motion to award the Aben Shain Park Phase Three contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, always contractors, at an estimated cost of three hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty five dollars, project number one five zero one five.
Hey, which will second?
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Item thirteen is a consideration of a motion to approve a change order for the city buildings demolition contract with Gunderson Excavating for changed conditions encountered and the corresponding extra work on the city hall, library, and parking garage and to allocate up to seventy thousand dollars of additional capital improvement funds in the third district.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, the demolition of the buildings is complete and the school district is well on their way to their, their redevelopment of the site. Project was fairly challenging, completed under, under a tight timeframe. And if the council will recall in cooperation with the, the contractor that's working for the school district. So there was kind of a shared site going on. But the, the crux of this issue is, is fairly significant changed conditions. We, we were called out to the, to the site in early December as the, as the buildings were being removed first with the, the parking garage and the library where we were alerted to what was perceived to be larger foundations and anticipated. So we, we verified the situation and, and we talked about how, how this could be addressed. Basically, we, we reviewed the, the as-built plans for the buildings as, as they were constructed sixty, sixty odd years ago. And we were able to confirm that, you know, these sixty, sixty-odd years ago, and we were able to confirm that, you know, these foundations out in the field were indeed significantly larger than shown on the plans. Basically, the plans are what the contractors use as they put their bids together. So that's the basis of, hey, we got different conditions out here. Our instructions were, to the contractor were to keep moving. We got, we got, we can't hold up either of these projects. And we were in, you know, in December here, so we didn't know what, how much longer the decent weather was going to hold out. Well, everybody knows that shortly after Christmas, then it snowed, and it got, and it got cold. So basically, the contract overran into the third week in, in January, but the contractor worked very hard and got the work done. There's big costs associated with these, with these, this extra foundation work, and so he has big concerns. He has given us photos. He's given us stone load tickets. He's given us his calculations as far as what the extra work adds up to for cost, and, you know, it's, it's a big number, you know? It's on the level of one-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. So thought that this needs to be discussed with council. Direction.
Ultimately, we were responsible for demolition to the satisfaction of the school district? So that they could perceive it their project?
Yes.
Clearly, in a project like this, and what you do is you negotiate, you, you look at the fees afterwards, but we needed to move forward with the work. So you, you tell the contractor, go do the work. We verified, and Mike's been in conversations with me along the way, that in fact, we did encounter conditions that weren't part of the as-built or the, the building plans. If you would have had as-built plans, you would have seen that what we surmise is that when they built the building sixty years ago, they ran into bad soils out there, and as part of those bad soils, they had to beef up the foundations, they had to put in fill where they had soft soil out there at some point. So that had to get removed, a fair amount of soil, because remember, we had compaction tests that we had to meet for the school's reuse of that site. Doesn't make any sense to put sloppy soil back in that they can't construct on, and that was part of our agreement with them. It needed to meet roll testing, and so this is what it took to do it. And engineering and our inspection department were out the whole time, so, you know, that's what the cost is. So certainly, it's not a surprise we wanted. The school district turned out being right, making sure that, you know, those were on us, whether we stayed at that site, whether we moved, we would encounter these costs anyway. So we had seven-hundred thousand dollars budgeted, five-hundred thousand in two thousand fifteen, and if you remember, we saw some increases. We put another two-hundred thousand in the seventeen capital budget. This will be, I think, another seventy thousand beyond that that we'll need to go over, and we have those dollars in fifteen oh-two, one-fifty oh-two.
Okay.
And so basically, it's, it's money that was left over on another capital project.
Questions? Alderman Gavitch?
Mike, just kind of refresh my memory. Is this the contractor that didn't turn in all his addendums to the bid? And then secondly, weren't they only supposed to go so deep with these and then bury them? Wasn't that the agreement with the footings rather than full removal? And then one other thing, we're talking about a seventy thousand dollar extra, must be a typo. Last paragraph of our report says a hundred and seventy thousand.
Yes, so it was in order that this is the contractor who failed to acknowledge the addendum in the bid, and for the reasons stated at that council meeting at the award, it was awarded anyways. And, I think I forgot the second part of the question, but the third part was the seventy...
The footings. I thought they only went so far and they buried it in the van.
Oh, right, yeah, no, yes. No, the, the specs were to completely remove everything, backfill with Sutima material, compaction testing, all of that, so that there would be no problems with the school's new building. That all occurred. It was, it was a massive effort. The seventy thousand versus the one-seventy, one-seventy is the change order work. Seventy was needed to supplement what had been budgeted.
Okay. I guess just a comment, I was a no on that addendum vote, and I'm going to be a no on this, be consistent, because I specifically said at that point in time, he has to do it for the price he stated. Be consistent with that.
Other questions?
You know, I don't know if there's anything we can do, but is the school district aware of this? I mean, is there any negotiations that can, can happen here? I mean, it seems right now it's a, it's, and through this whole project, a win-win-win-win-win for the school district. It seems like the city, and I guess that's maybe the contract, but it just seems like we're left holding the bag throughout this whole process.
I'll try to comment on that. So the school district felt that they had and wanted a buildable site. That was their position all the way along, and in order to do that, they had to have a site that was ready for construction. So it was one that they were able to put their footings and foundations in, that they had the proper soils that would compact to what their building were, and with the work we did was consistent with that. So, you know, they negotiated the agreement as part of that, and we were the other side of that party.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I address Alderman Gavitch as a concern. The, the issue with the award was just acknowledgement of the addendum that that had been issued for the, for the, for the bid, but that was not related to removal of the foundations. Contractor, you know, stated that he was aware of the addendum, just failed to acknowledge it on the bid form. He did complete, he did complete the foundation work and then some. So I, I just wanted to make that clarification.
So Mike, you're saying no matter who was awarded the bid, these are but incremental extra costs to that contractor?
Absolutely, that, I mean, I, I, I can appreciate how hard the contractor worked. He worked, he worked very hard on this project. He had to put up with some things that he didn't anticipate in, in the, in the bidding process, and that, that being that, you know, he was, the completion date was December thirty-first, and had he got it done by December thirty-first, he probably would have worked in about three days of pretty weather. He was there for another three weeks beyond that. He worked alongside the contractor that's working on the school site, and I heard a lot of grumbling from him on that, and I think that that was justified from, from some extent. But that was something that everybody agreed to. So he was, you know, he was pressed.
Yeah.
And, and, and I guess I would say that any contractor that we work with out there would be looking for extra costs for, for the effort, and I, I, I think that potentially we could have been dealing with a contractor that says, I'm pulling off site until I can, you know, demolish this building. There were delays related to, if you recall, the phone and the electrical issues that we had with this building. So he had to deal with those, and, and that was not anticipated either.
So in terms of, you know, getting site prepared for this, we were really the victim of a pre-GIS, pre-record keeping kind of era of construction where things were done on the job site and records weren't appropriately updated and kept.
I guess all I can say is that we, all we had to work with were the building plans that we had in file in engineering in the vault.
Ultimately, even though there are two separate entities, school district and the city, we were partners on this process. We turned over a, a site that had been the home of a city hall, library, and some other buildings for sixty years. We, we don't know what was underground. We had some idea based on some plans, but obviously, there was more to it. So, you know, we're tied to that agreement. That's a good, good faith cooperation between those two entities, and I think that's the right thing to do. Yeah, who's, who's happy about spending seventy grand more than we have to? But ultimately, the pro, the process and the projects move forward in the best possible way. Go ahead.
Just one, just to address Mike, again, no fault to the contractor. I totally understand extras on a job, believe me, and I applaud the contractor for going above and beyond. My whole point was in the original bid package, he should have been disallowed because he didn't follow the rules from the start. So if I'm going to be consistent, I'm going to go that way. But again, you're right, it could have happened to any contractor, and we were a victim of bad records at the time. So I applaud him for his hard work and his effort, but again, I don't see where he should have gotten it in the first place.
Go ahead.
This somewhat belabor is the point, but whenever you're dealing underground, you run into the potential for surprises. When we started this building here, within about two weeks of starting the contract, we ran into a fairly large surprise. We had a large concrete caisson that hadn't been anticipated as part of our basement, and I think we were ninety thousand dollars of an extra. It caused us two or three weeks delay, was right where the footings and foundations were. So when you start digging, you sometimes find things that aren't on any of the plans, and we encountered that at this site as well.
Rarely find gold, usually find concrete. All right, anything else? Motion?
Verhaelen makes a motion to approve a change order for the city building's demolition contract with Gunderson Excavating for changed conditions encountered and the corresponding extra work on the city hall, library, and parking garage, and to allocate up to seventy thousand dollars of additional capital improvement fund.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Gavitch.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And licensing, I'll turn it over to Alderman Kerkowski.
License committee met on February twenty-ninth. Council was provided with minutes this evening. Item number fourteen, Kerkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to Tina Campbell, nine-ten Madison Avenue, South Milwaukee.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman. Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Kerkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to Kayla Fleury, twenty-one forty-five South One Hundred Second Street, West Dallas.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kerkowski.
Aye.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Sixteen.
Kerkowski will make a motion to hold action on an operator's license to Brenda Fleury, twenty-eight thirty-five West College Avenue, Milwaukee.
Gale will second.
Is that a change?
Yes, we are holding.
Okay, holding sixteen?
Yes.
Okay. Gale seconded? Yep. Roll call.
Alderman, Gavitch.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to Olivia K. Renzo, six-two-two-zero, West Bennett Avenue, Milwaukee.
Gale seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman, Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Kerkowski make a motion to adjourn. Here's Kerkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Gavitch.
Aye.
Thank you for being here. Thanks to the audience for being here. We'll see you next Tuesday at Plan and Commission. Have a great night.